Next, head for the commissioners, please come to order. I'd like to modify the agenda and have item D, the consent agenda, move down under item H. I have a motion to adopt the modified agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
We can second it in the discussion. Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, likes, and there being none. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments, comments on any items that are not the public hearing later in the agenda. I will ask you to hold your comments to five minutes, no more than five minutes, and I'll ask Mr. Light if he would be our time keeper.
Yes, sir.
Come up and state your name and address for the record, if you would, please.
Thank you very much. My name is John Cece, I'm a resident of Nagshead, about a quarter mile right over this way in the village. I'm here to discuss the proposed funding for the beach nourishment that you'll be discussing later on. Couple of months ago, I presented a bunch of numbers to you, obviously, that didn't make much of an impact than anybody, so tonight, I'm here to officially apply for the same deal that the people in the last mile of the town are going to be getting, based on the approval of the beach current funding. You see my calculated there where my address is. According to Dare County, my property's worth $370,000, I'd be lucky if I could ever get that, but that's what the Dare County website says. My understanding is the taxation rate's gonna be about seventeen and a half cents. Taxes due, $647, so over six years, which I believe is what the payback is. I'm willing to pay, right now, I've got a check in my pocket, I'll pay you $3,885. Because if I lived in South Nagshead, I know that I would get $98,800 worth of sand placed on my property. Right now, anytime there's a tropical storm or a heavy rain event, I get two to three feet of water in the back of my yard. Town doesn't do anything about it. So, this is why I'd like to come here to you tonight and apply for the funding to be able to fill my yard to prevent the flooding. All I'm asking for is the same deal that you're giving to folks in South Nagshead. I'm not asking for anything special, I'm not asking for anything different. You're here to represent all of the people of Nagshead, not just the motion front property owners in South Nagshead. So, would anybody like to tell me who I can get my $98,800 check from? Your silence is definite. Thank you very much.
Are there any others who would like to come speak to the board tonight? If not, I'll declare a public comment section closed. We have an old business item table from our previous meeting, the project update on the C grant, NOAA case study. Andy, you present that.
Yes, good evening. This is something you discussed at your last meeting. This is regarding the town's participation in a sea level rise case study that would be sponsored by NOAA. We were asked to check with their staff to see what our level of participation would be. We've done that, and they've assured us that we would simply be required to review a narrative and provide input, it would be a short narrative, and we would also be given a chance to have the board able to review this as well. They assured us that it wouldn't be a burden on our time, and it wouldn't impact our ability to complete some of our other projects. So, with that said, we would ask that we be allowed to participate in the case study and provide information to them.
Any questions for Andy?
I think it would be a good action in that we would be one of the first towns in North Carolina to do a sea level rise study, and this is kind of setting the benchmark for other towns along the coast. I think it would be very good for the town, very good advertising for the town.
Any other opinions?
Do we have consensus that staff can proceed with working with C grant to publish this case study?
As long as staff feels like they have the time to do it.
Yeah, that's the only thing, we have to be helping them, not leading them.
Understood.
And we get to review it.
Yeah, we review it before things are right.
Mm-hmm. And it's a fairly short narrative, so, yep. And there's no urgency on their part either.
All right, we have consensus then that staff proceed with C grant. Have consensus. Good. Next item is adoption of the fiscal year 2017-18 town operating budget.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. My thanks to you all for your work and due diligence in going through the budget process this year, as well as my thanks and appreciation to the finance officer, the deputy town manager, and all department heads and staff. What we've got before you is a request for adoption of the FY 17-18 fiscal year budget. We have a memo that outlines the changes from the managers recommended to what we're asking you to adopt tonight. We have with this would also be the adoption of the FY 17-18 budget ordinance. We've also included in your packet the proposed CIP schedule with projected lease payments for FY 17-18, resolution for committed fund balance, which is, would be amendment number one, in consideration of updated consolidated fee schedule. The changes that are in your packet and the memo that Roberta has on the screen, the changes actually reflect a decrease of $35,626 in the general fund. You can see how that difference is made up. By doing this, we would decrease the fund balance appropriation from $300,000 to $275,503, which would bring the overall general fund budget ordinance decrease to $16,899,479. The decrease in the water fund from recommended till adoption tonight would be a decrease of $2,288, as realized from the decrease in the wellness incentives. That decrease has retained earnings in the water fund to $493,279, and the water fund budget ordinance decreased to $3,213,598. The budget still reflects no general fund tax increase or any increases in water rate fees. There is the first of the year of the municipal service district tax of 17.5 cents, and this and then 2.7 cents of the this year's tax would again be a townwide tax contributed to the beach nourishment fund. So, I'll answer, any questions you may have?
Anybody have any questions for Cliff at this time? Act on each of these individually, so at this time, do we have a motion for adoption of the 2017-18 town operating budget?
As presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded in discussion. Not all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, likes, and there being none, it's ordered. Okay, proposed CIP request.
Yes, sir, in the, in your packet also is the, this would be, I'm not sure we needed a motion, it's, CIP is approved as with the adoption of the budget, but this lays out for you the next several years of lease payments as we've adopted CIP for 17-18, and this is, we would have projected through 2023.
Any questions on the CIP budget?
I don't, I don't believe that you need a motion to adopt this.
Right, it was adopted before, just wanted to, has anybody had any question?
CIP is subject to change, however, every year.
Correct.
As it's readopted.
Correct.
But I think the point is well noted, that the budget is a two-year budget, and the CIP runs out five, seven years.
Next time, would, we would ask for a motion for the, approve the budget fund balance appropriation for amendment number one.
Any questions for Cliff on the resolution?
What this does is, the board has set aside the $80,000 that you realized in health savings and.
And the.
Correct.
If not, is there a motion to accept the resolution? Motion made in fund balance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded in discussion. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, likes, and it's ordered. Got to feed consolidated fee schedule.
Right, the, approve the updated consolidated fee schedule for your consideration, it's listed, you'll see, we've indicated where you'll find these changes under public works. The water rate impact fee includes updating the consolidated fee schedule with fees currently only addressed in town administrative policies, so this would bring in the fees that we collect all under the consolidated fee schedule. Changes include water meter drop-ins and tap connections calculated at current cost plus 20 percent. It also includes the interest rate on septic health loans, which previously had not been included, and that's also brought into the fee schedule.
Any questions on the, on the consolidated fee schedule? Any discussion? Do we have a motion to accept the consolidated fee schedule?
No, she to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded in discussion on the motion. Not all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, likes, and there being none, it's ordered.
Thank you, thank you all.
Mr. Light, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not, yes, sir.
Good. Okay, Cliff, we'll have you back up.
Yes, sir.
Will do your closed session first, or the other two items first?
I can go ahead and do these two.
Okay, all right.
First was the, which was moved from the consent agenda, was the consideration of budget adjustment number 11 for the current fiscal year. We've realized that we, the reason we've asked you to remove this, budget adjustment 11.2, which would transfer from $10,000 from contingency into legal fees. We, I'm requesting that you increase that contingency from $20,000 to legal fees. This is to make sure that we have enough remaining funds to get us through the end of the fiscal year. I don't know, I don't believe that we'll spend that much, but if we don't have the right amount of money in our legal fees, then we'll be in violation of state statute with the auditor, as this, this is not a line item that we can transfer funds into after July 1st, so we need to make sure that there's enough, enough there.
Do we have a motion to, you need a motion to approve that?
Yes, sir. And that, actually, the, that would be, the motion, I think, would be to approve budget adjustment number 11, noting that increase.
All right. Also, got, okay. We have a, in a discussion. We got a motion to approve that budget adjustment.
Make a motion to approve budget amendment number 11.
Is that a second?
With the, excuse me, can I ask, did you make it with the, with the amendment, with the adjustment?
That's not correct up there. It's $2,000.
The amendment is the adjustment.
The amendment is the adjustment.
Right. But that's not what's shown, 11 does not have the thing, we have to make, if I could suggest friendly amendment that you. All right, I'll second it.
Go ahead.
I'll second it with a friendly amendment that you, we, that we adjust 11.2 to reflect $20,000 from contingency to legal professional fees.
Yes, sir.
Agreed.
Which I believe that's what the town manager was asking.
That's correct, thank you.
Any further questions? Motion's been made and seconded in, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, likes, and there being none, it's ordered. Next item is the consideration of the beach nourishment capital project ordinance amendment number two.
Yes, and I believe Commissioner Tahoon had some questions regarding this, and I may need to ask the finance officer and town engineer for some assistance with answering those questions.
Mine? That's okay, David.
Yes, go ahead.
My questions relate more to terms of general information. It says 30-year beach study and a five-year profile monitoring, those are just general line items, they are not specific to any particular firm, is that right?
That's correct, the, presently, the only obligated funds for, is for engineering and construction oversight, and that's part of the permitting process, I believe that's, that's the only contract that we have presently in place, so obviously, the pumping cost and some of these other costs for the sand fencing and the sprigging, the monitoring, those would be contracts that would be let later.
Okay, and I ask because I know we're reaching the end of a monitoring contract.
That's correct.
And this would reflect a new monitoring contract.
That's right, the, the present contract that we have with CSC is set, I believe this is the last year of monitoring this, the present project, and that would, that would mean, at some point, we're gonna have to reenter into in a contract for the monitoring of the upcoming project.
We'll put out RFQ.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Because I mean, I think it needs to be a little discussion. Before I, I wanted a clarification before I agreed to vote.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other question, as it relates to beach nourishment, is I'd ask David to get some information from Dr. Connor, has it come forward? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the beach nourishment capital project ordinance amendment? Questions, discussion? I entertain a motion to consider the, to adopt the beach nourishment capital project ordinance amendment number two.
Some, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, likes, and there being none. We need to go into, into closed session for just a few minutes, we'll be back very shortly if I have a motion to go into closed session.
This would be to discuss the acquisition of real property at 10, 10,026 South Old Oregon Inlet Road, under the general statute that the attorney will cite.
Yes, you want a motion under general statute 143-318.11A5.
So, moved.
Moved, the motion moved and seconded?
Second.
Moved, second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We'll adjourn it to closed session for just a few minutes. Board's back in open session, Mr. Light, I'll ask you to report up from the closed session, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the board did take action by giving instructions to the town manager, but otherwise, no other actions were taken.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the board have any thing they would like to bring to the attention of the board tonight? Mr. Commissioner, the mayor?
Just as a liaison feedback to the board and the public, the focus technical committee held its first meeting June 9th, attended by the committee members, most of the committee members, staff, and our contractor consultant, Dale Holland, had a good kickoff meeting, it was kind of like a pre-construction meeting where the ground rules were set and people were allowed to ask questions and make sure they understand the process. The consultant, Dale Holland, gave pretty much the same public participation briefing that was given to this board at our last meeting, answered questions, it was good dialogue about the meetings and how the process would work, so we got off to a good start, did discuss the importance of the planning board being able to participate and see at key points in the process what was going on, and what the feedback was from the public, et cetera, et cetera. So, that pretty much concluded the meeting, again, I think it was a good start, we have several meetings scheduled, the schedule that was presented to us is still a schedule that we plan to adhere to, and we talked about how to make sure we stay on that schedule. As of aside from that, there's, has been a development that one of the technical committee members is definitely leaving the area, which, if you want to call it that, creates a vacancy on the technical committee, and I would ask this board if they would consider appointing a replacement for that person on the technical committee, and further, would like to encourage that that replacement be someone from the planning board to enhance our participation of the planning board on the technical committee, as there's a total nexus between the UDO that will be developed and the work that the planning board does on a day-to-day basis.
I think we can defer that, that new appointment, that was permitted to our July 5th meeting, would that be acceptable?
That'd be fine, I mean.
Right, I'll make sure to get that on the agenda for the July 5th meeting. Anything else?
No, sir.
Good, thank you. Portem Walters, you have anything for us?
I just want to give you a few figures from the tourism board on occupancy and meals for this year over last year, actual, this year over actual last year for July to date is, occupancy is up 5.59 percent, and meals are up 2.67 percent, and actual to actual beginning with January of this year, occupancy is up 24.07 percent, and meals are up 7.52 percent. Also, retail sales, gross collections on retail sales for the months of January, February, and March are up 19.79 percent over 2016, which is a little bit news, I hope, I'm hoping everyone's gonna have a great year.
It continues.
I hope so, too.
Strong, strong spring.
And then occupancy by district, specifically Nagshead, beginning with January of this year, were up 33.01 percent, and meals are up 7.45 percent. So, it's looking like it's going to be a really good year, most of the hotels, motels, and cottages are reporting significant increases in bookings over last year, so I think everybody's looking forward to a good year, and the restaurants today, at least the ones who have spoken, have sat down, have had a great year.
That's great, good news. Commissioner, Commissioner Ratzenberger, you think for us tonight?
Yeah, we had a little mini ARPO meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was really to try and discuss next submissions, and Andy and I worked on the, using the project, the focus updates that have all been done here, and the reprioritization of our bike and ped pass to move up. A lot of our local needs is above anything else, and so what we did is revamp the exist, I should tell you this, length or size counts, because unfortunately, the more accidents you have, the higher your safety score, and which is, I mean, it's so perverse, it's pathetic, but, so what we did is basically, we revised our existing big project, which had been from Gull to Sea Chase, into a huge project, Gull all the way up to Hollowell, which takes us all the way up into town and, and in bits and pieces, and it covers five, six, eight of our projects in the focus plan in one thing. We can piecemeal our way through them until, assuming, whenever we get money, they can do the rest of it, but we can piecemeal our way. So, the second one then is to take the old Gull to Junets Pier project, which was in there, and run that down just a little longer to Whalebone Park, still be on the west side at 12, and that was also project out of our focus, and then lastly, is a new one, is a sidewalk on the west side of 12 from Driftwood to Curlew, which is two more projects in the focus, so we've hit almost everything, you know, lengthy, going for length in these things, we'll throw them in, in the July meeting, we will have a formal July meeting when we can look at everybody's submissions and see where they go there, but that's kind of the plan. I think it's probably the third plan we've had, at least, to try and get it somewhere with this, the state, the STIP process, I mean, it's, we keep trying. The other interest, but, you know, since we've had interest from the west side on path and stuff over there, it's happened, we're trying. Another item of discussion there, DOT is evidently going to quote auto carry over the Highway 4 widening, 64 widening, Alligator River and all that. They're kind of playing game, loose with it, but they're gonna auto carry that over so it's a project for the next year. They're trying to keep it in front of everybody without going through a whole new process, so that's, whether that results in a bridge or a widening, we don't know, but we're not going, we're eliminating some of the bureaucracy. Of course, the Kitty Hawk Flyover, that whole intersection up there was a point of discussion, and so is the 64 interchange in Manio, that is a huge discussion because of the crowds and the problems of where exactly do we change it because of the existing properties and every other thing, so, it was an interesting little session. Hopefully, I can say something more formal about, you know, where we are, our submissions in July, or after July, and that was it, sir.
Thank you. Town manager Ogman and Portem Walters and I toured the Peak Resources facility today, they're ribbon cutting, and open house is still scheduled for June 29th, and just from our walk through today, it, I encourage everybody to go see it, it's a tremendous improvement, and I think we've got a couple outstanding items that we, that they have to work on yet before it be complete, but it's a, it's a major, major improvement. We also need to talk about a letter to Representative Walter Jones, and lit into the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and National Marine Fisheries Service concerning incidental take authorization applications for this, for seismic testing. Any discussion on that, any recommendations on what we should be doing there? Any discussion on that, any recommendations on what we should be doing there?
Well, I know John had some concerns.
No, I, I don't have any concerns, I want to know what it is we're trying to accomplish. Right now, I, and this is simply a question in the process because I believe that Bohem, by its lonesome, as best I can figure out without talking to him, has already, before this was cut off, before President Obama cut off any, any discussion, they were already through much of their flow chart. What's hap, and then that discussion was restarted. Marine Fisheries has a open comment out right now, open till I believe the 7th of July. So that's on the web, that puts them in this part of the flow chart here, which heads over this way and gets evaluated as to whether or not they, they issue the IHA or not. Then it goes back up to Bohem who. Technically, we should be commenting or trying to comment on the Marine Fisheries thing. That is limited specifically to take of animals. Their, their instructions are very explicit that we don't want to hear about drilling, any oil spills or anything else, we're talking strictly take of animals.
Seismic testing to, to limit the take of the animals.
Right, and, and that's, I mean, that's, but it seems to me and, and that part of this issue is that we have six, I think it's actually seven applicants, six of which are seismic, out there. And the real issue is, do all six of these folks need to drag their arrays through the same area, coming up with the same thing? That seems like six times the chance.
Do we have six, six tests or one test?
Well, one test with, you know, everybody sharing the data, if they have to pay for it. I mean, it's, you know, it's just silly stuff to have it out there. And it seems, in my opinion, is trying to get that process energized to where the, the result from the Marine Fisheries is one. I doubt you'll ever get zero, but I don't, I just, I, I just don't know what the question is we're trying to get answered.
Well, bottom line, we're trying to stop seismic testing. And Marine Fisheries is trying to do it by, by emphasis on the take of whales and dolphins, in particular 38,000 dolphins is in the objective take. That, that's the approach that they're taking, but no other approaches work.
Right.
So do we want to support that, that approach?
Of course, but I mean, that was a, you know, there were, this thing started with a whole different direction when it popped up in terms of what we're doing. And I thought we had a rather weak ask. If we were going to go to Representative Jones, the ask was weak.
Yes, please.
I mean, I think that the scientific community has basically said the same thing you have and have testified that there is no need to do, to duplicate something over and over and over again. When you know that the harm that will do to marine mammals, fish stocks, all of those things, and it won't be an immediate result, it will be a longer-term result. So it is about, you know, extending that comment period to allow, allow more input into this decision as opposed to just saying, yeah, seven can go out there and do the same, replicate the same process over and over, which continues to do more damage.
Question is, what's the best way for us to get involved and let, let everyone know our objection to what the plans are? If, if we are objecting.
Well, we've taken a pretty strong stance about seismic testing, about drilling, we've done that repeatedly. We know the harm that it's going to do to our, our environment and eventually our economy. So it seems like a letter to that effect and first do no harm, how about that? So let's not, if we're going to harm, let's don't do it seven times.
Alright, would, would we be better to give our response to the Marine Fisheries and letter to Jones, is that the proper approach?
I think we should, we should definitely reply to Marine Fisheries up here, ignoring anything about drilling and hydrocarbons and all that, that's off, off the discussion.
Alright, seismic testing's off the table, then the rest of it's off the table.
Right, and then also get Congressman Jones involved in the same thing.
We could copy him on the letter.
Do we have a?
Oh, I wouldn't copy the Congressman, I would give him his own letter with, with the attachment, I mean, you know.
Right. With the, with the attachment of our response to Marine Fisheries. Do we have a motion to that effect, if that's the case, then we can get that done.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded and in further discussion. Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, there being, wanted to bring up, because of an email that I received yesterday, bring up the question of the Daniel Bridge crossing. Commissioner Tahoon, I think you can probably give us better update on the history of that than anybody else the last time we went to DOT in trying to get something done.
We basically, they did put up a flashing light, but we had been asking the former DOT representative for a stoplight or motion activated or some other method of safe crossing. We have been told no repeatedly and I think the manager and I talked briefly about a list of priorities for perhaps a new, the new rep. And that would be high on my list of priorities, at least to take a study of it and get some action because it's, one of the things we had asked for, by the way, also was a reduction in speed limit. That's what we had, the last thing was, we had asked for basically from pretty much townwide.
Townwide, 45.
Since we've lowered it all the way to Jockeys Bridge, pretty much in school. Some of us with lid feet, if it's 50, we're probably doing a little bit more than 50. So if it goes to 45, we may stop at 50. But that is a zone where it's a straightaway and it does have an incline and a decline and, and then you're coming off the Washington-Balm Bridge too. You're, everybody's flying pretty fast.
Slowing down coming off of Washington-Balm.
And the police have had their radar trailer out there for a lot this spring.
And they're quite busy. If we need to, we can share that data with the DOT rep, with the average speed and share the traffic volumes. If you're right coming off the Balm Bridge, they're going well in excess of the speed limit.
Because it drops from 50 to 55, but that's like a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, I always drop my speed there, but you're in danger of getting run over when you do.
Absolutely, I think you got the crosswalk right.
Right there, on top of.
And people, the problem with the four lane there is people do not, one car may stop, but if you're in a different lane, you're not going to see anybody.
You don't see it, I took it you got it behind a truck.
So my suggestion would be for this board to make contact with the new DOT rep and ask him to either meet with the mayor and the manager and talk about possible solutions that DOT, that they would support.
Mr. Ogman, do you have some comments?
If appropriate, also, I think we should definitely do that and there's some, maybe some other issues that we could, that the board has expressed concern about, that we could use this as an opportunity to. We have yet, we've had communication, I know the police chief has communicated some current concerns on NC-12 after the accident that we had a couple of months back and been very responsive, but I, I think it's a good idea and a good time for us to invite.
We want to turn on the fire hose and get outfalls and everything else included?
Well, I, I, I think at some, why don't, I think at some point we need to prioritize our list of things and this is one that are, you're hearing from your constituents over and over again as a reoccurring theme, but, but I do think it's important that we list out all the concerns and not piecemeal those concerns. Yes.
One thing I would ask, is it still in the DOT regs that if there's an argument about a speed limit, it defaults to 45? That wasn't regulations at one point? And I'd be interested in knowing if that's still there, because if, if it is, then by default, if we're arguing over what speed limit, then it would default to 45.
We can certainly bring that.
This, this, I'll copy the email I received today with another near miss at the Daniel Bridge crossing.
Okay, we'll set that meeting up.
Okay. You and I need to get together with DOT reps, new ones. Is there any other business to bring forth board tonight? If not, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you very much.